Yeah, but we get paid a lot.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Double time, great. So, Matt and I talked a little bit about an agenda. We have a few topics that we think are of common interest just that we've heard, but really our goal is to talk less and really never have a collaboration conversation. So, if I walk in on our behalf and say anything that concerns us.
Yep, just, you know, we're excited. We've been talking about this for a while on council. This is my first meeting as a joint thing. I think it's a, it's a great idea. I've never seen this before, so I think it, I mean, and it makes sense because of all the collaboration that we do have, that we have these once a year, just to kind of get to know each other. And, you know, we have our nice new space here that we both use, so it's kind of, it's kind of fitting that we all get to be here and talk in a little bit more of an intimate setting, I think, just so we can kind of talk about future, get some, maybe some ideas and, and start doing this, you know, annually. Next year, my plan though is to do it at the game room, because we have like 400 pumpkins we need to carve pumpkin walk for this weekend. So, I was thinking we could all just carve pumpkins while we're having this meeting, and I think that would be really awesome. So, I'll, I'll hit you up next year for that, the W month.
So, we, we last had a joint meeting in January of 2022, so that's interesting, as I recall. But since then, we have, we have a few new people to the mix, so I think it'd be awesome if we could maybe start off and just go around the table, and we have some audience here, and so welcome, and thank you all for being here. It's impressive to see it. I think it'd be great if everybody knew everyone at the table, if you don't already, so maybe just name and how long you've been serving in the role that you're in.
Can I name a star?
Sure.
I am Ann Meyer. This is my fifth year, sorry, my sixth year on, on the school board. Before that, I was a counselor at Highlands, a teacher at Highlands, so I've been around for a long time.
I'm Sarah Foster.
I was just gonna say some January.
I'm still in my first month.
Four years, that's seven years.
Exactly. Yeah, so first term on the school board.
I'm going from, well, I came on same time Sarah, so we're the newbies, yeah.
Hi, I'm Julie Kuhnheim, and this is my third year, so almost the first term.
I'm Jeff Beech, and I've been here 13 years. Different kind of license later, so. That's good. Adam Lyles, my third term on council, fifth year, I believe, was on the Renaissance Board prior to this, before jumping into, into this mess with these weeds, such as session, as the table board, and then a member of a couple of different boards, Business Association Boards. But I do, I do absolutely love this meeting. I think it's the most important and best meeting we have, you know what I mean? It's my third time being a part of it. I'd rather do it every year than every other year, but it is nice, especially to be obsessed with council, but we have such an overlapping programs here in our cities. I think it's just important that we know exactly where we are, so we're all on the same page, so it helps a lot.
Eric Strange, first term, first year, City Council.
Andy Elton, first year, first term in the city.
I'm Ben Pendry. It's my second term, so I'm working on my third year on City Council.
Jeff Beesold, ninth year.
Wow, that's good. Eric Haas, I've been, my third term is, the beginning of my third term as mayor, but I've been on council since 97. So, sometimes it's good to have some history, and it's good to have new people, so it's a good mix, so.
Yeah. And I'm Matt Kramer. I'm a city administrator at Fort Thomas, and been here about a year and a half.
So, we think the, the first thing that would be really good, especially since we have a mix of, of experience and, and people who are in their first term, is just to highlight some of the collaborations that currently exist. In, in one capacity or another, I, I came into Fort Thomas in 1997 as a teacher, and been able to serve in a variety of roles, but what I'll, what I'll tell you is that I feel no other place on earth is as, is as nice as what we have here. And even in that time span, to see some of the developments that have happened in the city and the type of collaboration, and really just made me miss even more of a destination location has just, has been a fantastic thing to hear. So, some of the collaborations, and I encourage you, if we do something off the list, you guys have some things in your mind to, to join in at the end. The fact that we've collaborated to not only initiate an SRO program, but to expand it, it is something that I think takes careful collaboration as a town. That we're here and sharing of facilities and how open and willing the, the city has been for us to host our public meetings here is a collaborative effort, but there's a variety of, of other facilities and, and venues that, that we share and collaborate to improve and to make great use of. So, Tower Park, it goes all the way back to 1980, when we, when we had collaboration between the city and the schools and dual ownership and use in spaces. Highland Park has been the home of our baseball program. There's been some, some creative ways to improve it. Wiggler Park, which was a second bit probably about 10 years ago, but has been a fantastic use with our softball programs, tennis, tennis courts, cross-country courses, bus parking, the, the city walk collaboration where, where we stage or, or move people around to the schools, or the Fourth of July collaborations for, for parades and, and use of space. I think you all helped us have a, a homecoming parade in two years in a row, in, in, in a variety of ways. Tax collection, but then even just coordination of, of projects such as the Johnson Project, whether it's sidewalks or, or some of those spaces. And then student programming and services has been expanding over, over the last several years as well, where we have students that are doing internships and they're, and they're presenting projects to a variety of city, city folks, and we're really proud to say we, we got alumni work closely within the city. So, I think it's been a really healthy collaboration, and I probably lessoned things off, so I definitely would, would open it up if there's other, other comments or observations that you guys have seen related to it.
Still good collaborating on how you look tonight. Already.
Definitely so many perfect days. Rest of y'all out there. We passed in ordinance about that years ago.
I, I did use that in my interview, that, hey, it's just, it just, it works.
There is the natural.
Yeah, we're all.
I heard Jeff Schneider on Psych.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the things that Brian was talking about, I think we know a lot of those, but the collaboration is constant, you know? We got an email, you know, Adam got an email from the senior class about projects, he sent it to me, and I, you know, I met with them about doing things with the VA and, and helping, you know, the veterans that were there to, there should be ongoing things. I recently reached out, anytime I've been seeing things in the city that we kind of need help on, because, you know, the staffing levels aren't, aren't super high, just been talking to teachers and stuff, and they're always looking for projects. So, for, for one, just to update our kiosks in the parks, you know, with the papers. I've, I've noticed that we just don't keep them updated all the time. We have old stuff and that annoys me, but we just really don't have the staff or even remember all the time. So, the last two months, I've engaged with students, and I got a teacher that was interested to have a student do that every, every month. And, and they already, they did it once last month, where they go to each one of our kiosks, they give them math that should be in there, you know, print it out what they need, they go around, help pull out the old stuff, put in the new stuff, they inspect them, and then they give me a report afterwards. So, I mean, it was really cool. I got a, a late night, it was like nine o'clock, I got a phone call from a number, luckily I answered, and I didn't sound annoyed when I answered, and it was a, it was a high school student, and she's like, hey, I actually mentioned, you know, there's, you know, there's damage to the rossper, it's missing glass, so, so, I mean, it's just stuff like that. And just a few days ago, again, I forgot about the kiosks, which is the problem, they, they emailed me and said, hey, we're ready to do it next week, you know, where's the stuff? So, it's just really neat that we're constantly helping each other out with that. It, it gives, it gives the students some responsibility, and, and, and they're doing awesome, because I kind of laid out, like, hey, afterwards, if you can call me, email me, and then that's exactly what they did. Everything we asked, they did exactly. So, I mean, it's just really cool to have that collaboration. So, that's just an ongoing thing. We always come up with new ideas, or the school asks, or we do, and it's just really neat, whether it's us helping the school, you know, paint a side walk once this year, or it's them helping us. So, it's just really cool to have that, that open of a, between just the teachers. I mean, I, you know, my last city, we had a lot of collaboration, but just the input we get here is just, we've got, I mean, we have teachers reaching out, students, it's just really cool. It's just a really, it's a really neat thing, and, I mean, the collaboration list could just go on forever.
And it really, it hasn't always been that way. I mean, I think at the staff level, there was always good cooperation between the schools and the city. That didn't necessarily go from the board levels, back when I first got on council. There just didn't seem to be an interest in the two groups getting together, and I don't know the reason why, because I was new at the time, but we eventually got to the point where we did need, and it was like, okay, this is smart, let's do it more often. And helped encourage more of that collaboration, because it just makes sense, it really does.
I think the SRI is a lot, I think the, a lot of emphasis is acting as, well, and it's not to just dictate to the kids what needs to be done, but work with them and teach them, and gain the respect of an authority figure, and create that bond that helps us collaborate with them as a city as an adult. And it's, it's, the programs too, I went through the tours, my 20-year press reunion, I did the tour, Kevin gave us a great tour, and we went through some of his programs, it's almost like college now, where you can pick and choose what you want to do, if you're giving more adult decisions, and I think it, it shows what you guys are doing, what exactly done, the bonds you created, and the structure you created helps us, you know? Because we need them, understand how the world works, because of their age, you know, we are way out of tune, you know? By this time, my dad was asking me at my age to do my BCR, I think the same thing last time, you know, so, 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 I think it's huge. I think that sort of back and sort of becomes, you're paying for yourself. Yeah, I know.
Anything to be anything from removing a hornet's nest. We, we, we're on the phone to, to remove a hornet's nest that's in the middle of the road, right across from the school, but it's really city rapid even, you know, just, if it's a truck, we'll get the exterminator out there, right? It's, it's that kind of thing and that level. But if you, if you see an emergency, emergency services collaborate with our principals, and Jamie leads at the beginning of the year, to make sure we know what a lockdown looks like, to make sure we, we know what our drill schedules are, just the level of, of calibration and coordination to make sure that, that our students are safe and our community is taken care of, is, is, it's a really powerful thing to see. You guys did it from the policy side, but, but we get to see it happen each and every day, and it's, it's pretty special.
What's nice when we're talking about things to do, I mean, when we started working on Johnson, we were going to do there, and decided that it was, we were going to move the whole thing to the valley, and, you know, as part of those discussions, you're like, okay, we got to collaborate with the city to make this happen. Knowing you can go in and have good discussions, because you know the city, we've collaborated on that. And sort of the same thing, I know we're going to talk about Tower Park, but just like that, it's like knowing going ahead that, hey, we're going to have, no matter where we end up, we're going to have some good discussions, and so, you know, you hear about that it's not always the case, and cities and schools always don't get along, and just being, knowing going into any project that we've got coming up, that, hey, you know, we can go talk to the city and help figure it out together, that is, makes it so much easier when you're starting those sessions.
Especially when you can be completely honest, like, you know, me and Brian are completely blunt by each other, we don't have to hide, just in case they're going to say, I mean, we're just, hey, this is what it is.
This isn't going to work.
Right, and it makes the, it makes it so much easier between us, because we are completely blunt, and, you know, it's, there's no hard feeling, you know, it's, it's work, it's business.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's been, it's been incredible since I've been here, just of, of working on the handful of projects that we had, the big projects.
I, I think both sides understand the, the value of working together too, because decisions we make affect you guys drastically, and decisions you guys make affect what we do drastically also. Such a small community, it's, it's a bigger small community, and, and we love the fact that it's, that it is the way that it is, but one decision by you guys could drastically affect what we have to decide on, and one decision by us has to drastically change the region as well. So, staying close relationship is, is key to, to flourishing the situation.
So, our agenda, and I'd be remiss, there, there is creme brulee. My country.
Very good.
I heard you talk.
I'm going to get a creme brulee, made the creme brulee and cookies, and so I asked Miss Hughes, I said, can you connect with our student-led business there? And Abby makes it, and she said, well, the teacher said, well, I'm out of town, but our students would be happy to bring up a couple desserts. So, she came and got me out of there, you know, there's like a whole bunch of old creme brulee dinner, to tell a lot. So, so the topics that we wanted to do updates on are the Tower Park project, we'll give a, just a brief one, because I know you all have seen it, and you guys are tired of talking about it. So, so we'll give just really highlights, I'm not going to go through a whole presentation upon it, I mostly want to save time for question and answer to the, to the best degree possible. Matt's going to give some, some updates just on some community projects that you guys have been talking about, same thing, question and answer with it. I know that enrollment has been a question, so I'm going to share some enrollment patterns, again, to, to help guide some of that work. The thing I hope we spend most of our time on, and that you, you feel like an open dialogue happens, is what are some future collaborations that we can also do? So, that, that's really our, our, our concern. On the same thing, so I'm going to share a couple pictures. Tower Park project, everybody knows what it looks like currently, and, and some of the, some of the pros and cons. I very purposely took the picture of the ones at the border, that's, that's intentional, to, to have that up on that space.
I'm trying to turn that one, turn this off.
I can eventually turn on.
That one turned on, and then these turned off, so.
Do you have any idea, turn this one on, say hi to the students?
No, I think, I think we're back. There we go, sorry.
No, thank you.
There you go. They're, they're coming. There we go. There we go. These are VHS.
Yes, right.
That one's going to be trash.
Yes.
So, really, this is a great example of collaboration going back decades, because it's, it's the one for the federal government, and it was gifted to the city in some ways, publicly, because my own, the schools needed a soccer facility at that point, we didn't have a soccer team, and so there was some early collaboration, well, there was some collaboration between the two entities in the late seventies and early eighties. So, that property is gifted to the, to the schools, and everybody in this room has been in this town long enough to see the different iterations of dirt field, the burried grass, which all got diseased and died, to, to regular grass, to, to really a community group coming together to turf it, and that was 12 years ago. And most people would say that, that a turf facility is about a 10-year lifespan, and that's where we're at. Well, in that period of time, we, we've talked about the limitations that are there, that there, there's not a locker room facility for students to shelter in in inclement weather, nor to, to use the restroom on the other side of the field if they, if they need to do so. Not training facilities, it is, it is not handicap accessible for community members to be able to, to connect with. It, it is limited in size, and so that our, our track events are limited to really small meets, which limits to sometimes JV events or one home event. Soccer program, it's at the minimum size to be able to do what we need to do, but it doesn't allow us to have regional or sectional tournaments there for our soccer program as well. So, it has some limitations that, that we, not to mention the impact of no parking, of, of the Frogger events that you go through in order to have drop off of your kids, and, and it is utilized by a whole variety of community members, whether it's Camp County North Soccer, or it's Kitty's Hammer Soccer, which you use all the time currently. And so, as you all know, we've embarked on a way to address all of those issues, from opportunities in athletics, to better traffic flows within the neighborhoods, to additional parking, to shelter in place, to, to places to train, and then also hopefully to impact programs in, in other words. You all have seen these renderings that we made. Our hope was to make this really a community project, and, and in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, is something that's generational, so that when you see this space, you see, I think, in a visual way, Tower Park coming together with Highlands High School. If it ain't on the front, it looks like a lot of those buildings, but hopefully it looks really common, that we try to blend it into the mess hall and, and the park, so that you can see and feel that, that connection from the start, from coming in, as well as you, you during the entrance.
And I do want, I mean, I want to, I don't want that to be understated, like, you know, the, the first drawings that we made, you know, and I talked to him about, I talked to Brian about, you know, just making it feel like, like Tower Park, like Fort Thomas, you know, just because this is, anytime you have a big change, people are going to ask questions. And to make it less of just a stadium and more of it belongs here, and, I mean, this was the very next, I mean, a week later, he brought this in, I was just like, holy cow, you know, we talked about that for like three minutes, and this is what came, and I just, I think it's awesome. I mean, I think this, it fits this area, and it's just amazing, the difference in these two drawings, or something, a lot of people probably didn't see those original drawings that I did, and it was fine, but, I mean, this is just, it, it really says what comes here.
And some other questions, from the, from the very start of, of the use of this facility, the agreement that, that happened in the eighties, and I think it was a verbal agreement, just to be very, be very honest, it was, when it's not used as school space, it is a community space, and that people have access to the track, and they have access to use it in a variety of places. And we had full intention and desires to make that a permanent thing, to the degree that in, in our, in our discussions at the start, or at the front, through, one of the suggestions that Matt made was, we, we moved family restrooms to the front of this building, so that while we're having events, people who are practicing on South Park or, or up top have access to restrooms, or we have access, access to restrooms that stay open while the park is open for the community to use, whether we have events there or not. And so, we, we've been really intentional to make sure we keep the spirit of, of that, of, of that agreement and that arrangement forever.
Brian, I'd just like to add to. The parking's dramatically improved, the facilities are going to just accommodate visitors and athletes and spectators so, so much better, but it's a safety thing too, I mean, to, to be able to adjust some of the traffic patterns and, and really look at it, and then on top of it, the charity on top, it's just that I think it's a beautiful concept, and, and it's very exciting.
But, and if you, you know, as our programs expand in schools, and we, and you guys wrestling a couple years ago, and that is really growing, and archery, and, and so, you know, practice space becomes a problem. So, when we started talking about putting it together, it's like, okay, we're going to, the track, the, the turf, if you have to play soccer, they know turf is going over there, and so, and then we start, started talking about them, and started talking about track, well, the track's not very usable beyond, you know, practice and things like that, it can't be, be used there. Ooh, talk about what else? And so, then we realized, okay, we can solve a couple issues with access to inside practice space for some of our sports that don't have to, I mean, it's a mad dash to find gyms and everything else, you know, throughout the winter, so this will give us a chance for the wrestling team, and the, you know, the, the dance team, and some cheer teams, and some other places that have space that's, that's not there. So, it's going to solve a lot of needs, you know, in addition to very visible ones of the soccer field and track. What are some plans for in-soc ability offices?
So, the, the, let's see if you look, well, now, one, one side is locker rooms, one side's another, you look how similar what we've, we've done down here, and that's where, I think the amount of sports, just point you hear, hey, we get in this fieldhouse at 5:00 AM, because it's the only time that it's open, you know? And the people back when we graduated would say, well, gosh, we didn't have a fieldhouse, well, that was, yeah, I mean, there's so much more. Yeah, there's so much more, so it's a, yeah, kind of really a, a full school, full athletic facility, it's not really just soccer track.
So, one side's turf, like the fieldhouse, or?
One, yeah, one side is going to be indoor turf and a ceiling height, I'm trying to remember what, how high that was, but really just one big open indoor, yes, five. I mean, right now, like the dance team with wrestling.
Sorry, Bill.
Uh, well, I was just going to say, the amount of like sports that we have that just need that, just an ancient turf facility is, is real quite a bit. But yeah, we also have weight equipment, and they're, sorry.
Did you mention the height? I learned it was similar to the other fieldhouse, where there's two levels and things like that.
Yeah.
In addition, you know, when we started talking about, you know, the project and what it might do, timeline, and upcoming seasons and all that, you realize that you're like, okay, in addition to all the other community groups that use this, we have six soccer teams using it. So, just that, you know, and, and there are times when they want to use some facilities, and it's difficult, and there's, we do share, but you've got a football team, you've got a band, you've got a bunch of other people using the field at high school, so this is going to solve a major need for, that we have right now, but it's going to grow some of these other sports that are starting to evolve.
So, this side, let's just say this side is, is locker space, with, it also has a multipurpose space in the middle that can be used for wrestling, it can be used for, for a variety of, for dance, for a variety of programs. The other space makes this project an impact on all programs, so whether it's archery, or color guard, or any, any number of the sports that are competing. You asked about the, the size, really, if you've been in the existing fieldhouse in the valley, imagine just the turf space, so not an all open, so it's not multi-level, and it's, and it's just limited to that one turf space that really is efficient. But that's, that's a big upgrade and impact to a lot of, like, other programs. And, you know, during the, during the day, most of the year, our kids are actually in school, so there are some, there are some possibilities if we start thinking creatively, of how, how also can we make this a living space during the day? Some of those could, could be future collaborations and partnerships, I would think, that we can, can build into.
Have you thought about a golf simulator for our program, our golf program? Is that being considered for in there?
We did, we own Fidda Center, we have to do a lot of like drywall repair.
Got a lot more games. So, our golf team seems to be showing up lately, and the, the girls team, I think, has 30, 30 kids on this year, and they had to turn people away from the, the men's team, so if we have an active interest in it, to keep them engaged in the winter, I can tell you that there's a lot of players that play always in play, and I played with a couple of them that took their first winter always in play, and they were dramatically better than they were, because they didn't have a season off, some of my friends. So, it, it, it's not a, it's not a large move or even a large investment, because they've been out for so long now, if you have the space, just something to consider for one of our programs, I think that's starting to be the plan, so.
That kind of, that kind of question, that's the perfect question, and that, that we're building abilities to grow.
How many pickleball courts?
I asked you.
That's the team, we get lacrosse, pickleball, we're counting that time.
Well, I'm glad you asked. And that is also something, the, the size of this space, well, it's not extravagant, but it, it does allow us to grow into other programs we don't have currently, and not only school sponsor, but club level, community, community as well. So, lacrosse is, is an example of, of a sport that is not currently recognized by KHSA, it, it's, there's no current or, or really soon planning around developing it at the high school level, but it typically starts at a club level, and it is one of the growth, highest growing sports in the, in the country, and so, having capacity for our kids to engage in a club sport, it, it does exist in the, so. This was the, this is kind of another, just kind of drawing view, in order to address all of the issues that we looked at, and we looked at several plans, this is where some of our cap, our coordination and, and cooperation comes in, and as you can see, a big part of that is really somewhere, this arrow, that's where Sergeant Road currently is, and so, it did require some movement of, of the road for that to occur, and for us to be able to add the parking in, in the safety features. You'll notice it also has a new entrance that comes in, so that there's not that blind turn, I mean, coming in from our reserve, and that comes in right where, where I've been told was one of the original entrances to that space, it was right to, basically, facing the field to the, to the preschool. Another opportunity that we'll have as a result of this project, it was in the memorandum of agreements, this is the current property line that was drawn with, with the, the start of this project, and you see, all the blue are, is the property that is owned by the school district, including a chunk of the road, our reserve road. Our, our intention at, at the conclusion of this project would be to redraw property lines so that they, so that they make sense, so, and actually, the blue is just getting down here, it's the South Park Field currently, which is a school property, it is, it is scheduled to maintain by the city, and it just, it just makes sense to, to keep that green space there. So, that's another advantage. In terms of next steps, we did open, so as we In terms of next steps, we did open, so as we talked about this, we had a very aggressive wish to start this project in October. We finished in time for July fifteenth soccer training so that we wouldn't impact soccer programs. That gave a lot of our architects highs, would be the best way to say it, because if that schedule was, was really, really tight, independent on a lot of individuals and changes of utilities and so on. So we decided that it would make the most sense to phase of the project. With phase one being moving the road, moving the utilities, having an entrance in, in place, and then move into a phase two, which is, which is the heart of our facility. So we opened bids on phase one last week. The cost, the low bid, which has not been approved or accepted, but the low bid was a million, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is about probably what we, what we would have expected. Includes a retaining wall, one of the retaining walls, four retaining walls in the project, movement of utilities, sidewalks that connect Sergeant Avenue, neighborhood to the park, guardrails to prevent the kind of parking that you see in that area during major events and, and so on. So, so we haven't actually reviewed that completely as a, as a board of this activity in the past week. Phase two is, is, we haven't sent out the bid. We're undergoing a really close estimation process. So we have some ongoing work in that area. We've been doing real great collaboration with Matt. We're, we're working with SD one to change, we don't speak English, but I'm like, that's over lines. You know, that stuff or even, anyway, there's a pump that's, that's hidden in, in some trees. Nobody really noticed was there. It's old and outdated, it only serves the concession stand and I think the Army Reserve. So there's some ongoing work to see if we can add a gravity line that can connect a lot of that area. SD one's on board, but that's more.
Yeah, and that, and there's just a lot of things that we've done over this process. You know, and like, on the very first meeting, we had a lot of discussion and one thing I kept in mind was let's, let's look back at twenty years and say we did this the right way. You know, because we all get into that work. Once we started looking at pricing, we started cutting things that, then, then like a couple of years, like, why did we do that like that? I know there's a little bit of money, but let's do this right. And I, we kept talking about that and, and one of the things was this pump station. You know, it was going to be old, it's a pain in the butt, it was kind of conflicting with parking. It was eliminating a lot of parking. And I think one, someone that had contacted SD one said they had to stay. Well, you know, I called SD one and I'm like, you know, this doesn't make sense. And, and we explained it, I don't think they understood it. But now we have a plan, we're just eliminating that pump. Because I mean, who wants that pump station, right? Because if the pump failed, we have steward backup, so nobody wants that. And with a little bit of work and a lot less money, we completely have, have a plan not to eliminate it. So I mean, it's just another thing, that area that we're fixing. I mean, yeah, it doesn't completely, I mean, the only impact to the place is concession stand. But for the reserve center, for everybody in that area, if that pump goes out, they're going to smell it. So it's, it's just a big win. And, and we've been really, you know, Brian has been really paying attention to that. Anything that we can fix that we really need to long term, let's do it. And it's, it's going to drag out a little bit longer because of that, but it's the right fix. And I think we'll look back and say that, that we absolutely should have done that. And it all looks like surprisingly, it's going to be really, a really good project and SD one's a hundred percent confident.
We've had a calm manner together, collaborative, to discuss what, what we're doing there. They're very positive and appreciative.
But we need that land to do it. We need a, a section of it.
It's really awful for me to talk about some of this where I just don't say, well, we need it to run downhill. That was actually what he's talking about. And, and this entire, it, it, it has a level of complexity because of the partnerships that we have involved. So I can't overstate that, that there is a, a significant investment on behalf of the school district in this area, right? For, for good reason. The city has been an amazing partners financially and logistically and, and just in a collaborative spirit. And it's super appreciative. We're seeking private partnerships that will do some advertising with as well. It's a significant part that is, it's almost finalized. I also want to thank and recognize Representative Kleins is here.
The back room.
He has been absolutely tremendous and amazing to work with. We, we are, we are very blessed to have, to have an advocate in, in our, our district, in the region. He and I talk with, with great frequency. And really one of the, the final parts that make this dream a reality is, is if we get partnership through the state legislature. So Representative Kleins has, has, has agreed to make this project as a community project in many ways. One of his, his primary asks and priorities in Frankfurt coming in the spring as well. And if that, if that comes through, I have full confidence that the dream that gets all up there becomes, becomes a full reality based on the information I have. Don't have the final phase two yet, I'll let you know that. But I do know that that, that, and you see, that part, that, that component makes it all lock in if we, if we're able to be successful. And I, I just want to thank you again publicly, Mike, for, for all your work and efforts. It's been greatly appreciated. And I know we've got a, a great friend over some time here.
So, so phase, phase one, if I, if I'm understanding this now, the way it's going to be phased is we're going to be doing a lot of the extra work, but the, the, the field will stay there. So next summer, we're still playing on the old field. But we can get the walls built, we can get the road put in, we can redo the road back to the neighborhoods. We can do a lot of the prep work so that then at the end of the next season is when we go like this with it.
Correct. So, so some of those decisions still have to be made. Phase one, which very, the decisions have to happen here and, and I don't even know the information I haven't told yet because it's about an hour or so. So, uh, phase one would be all of the roadwork and relocation to give us the ability to do what we need to do without coordination with, with Duke and SD one and Water, Water District and Alta Fiber and Spectrum and, and all of those components have to come together. That doesn't prevent this work from happening in a delayed way. We are only going to do that if, if we have full confidence that when we enter into a phase two or put it out with bid, that, that we can put a field in and, and stand set, right? So we've got to make sure that this can happen in or phase into it. So that's why that next thirty days will be, will be really important. The next thirty days, we have to finalize some partnerships and, and we have to have some considerations about what that phase two looks like. So originally, we were going to lose a track season, but be able to have most of a soccer season. Right now, we've got to make some decisions of do we start June one, which means we lose a soccer season? Or can it wait till like mid or late September, October? So those, those are some decisions we have.
For phase two. Phase, phase one may determine what phase two says. Based on the outcome.
Description of what the funding would be like without the money from the state?
The, so the funding is, is a couple of sources. There's some that's coming from, from our partnership. There is about a million dollars in private donations. And then the vast majority of that would come from our ability to, to sell odds and, sort of, from our bonding capacity. It'd be finance.
Yeah, we pretty much, we, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying, well, we're going to try to see where all this comes in because it's maximum south to make it all actually happen, you know what I mean?
That's the reason I was asking is if, if we're spending all this money to move the road before phase two is even going to happen, are we doing all that knowing that this is going to happen?
We're not going to do phase one unless we know we can definitely do phase two. Yeah, we don't want to move a road and put, put up walls and then do like, oh yeah, we couldn't do it. So, yeah.
So that's the next thirty days we're talking about. We'll know, we'll have a really good idea and we'll see, yeah, because one doesn't go without.
We've talked about that. I mean, that's been a lot of what the last month and a half has is, is obviously making sure that, you know, Brian's working on it, I have to, one unless we know we can finish the project.
And not that, I don't think there's a huge like question mark. I think we feel really good about it, but we just got to get the specifics in. So like Brian said, we saw, we've seen the bids for one. We've not seen them for two yet, so, you know, and that's always a good question mark. I mean, we do have, I mean, we did just finish, you know, five schools. We worked really well with some of the construction companies in the area. So I think we have a really good idea that, that should be fun. But we all know that should be, yeah, Morrell has been a great partner on all of our schools, right? All the one.
I would assume that in order to acquire state funding, you have to do the project at this point, no matter what, in order to submit, to make sure that all the Ts and Ts are there. So regardless, you know, you have to, you have to get these things done. To make sure people didn't know we weren't doing this out of that. The city wasn't doing the schools, so, but you have to do this in order to secure money. We get it, we get it, not that we try and get it actually right, it's a whole works.
And we do have a window that, that has been different that it hasn't been in the past. So two general assemblies ago, the bonding capacity that a school district would have should not be utilized on an extracurricular program. Two years ago, there was a relaxation of that regulation, which didn't, which, which basically put the KDE regulations on hold while they did a study. That officially ends June thirtieth of this year. And so, but, but really by all, but for all intents and purposes, we, we fully expect that to be extended or remain permanent, even, even by recommendation of the department. So it's not for sure. Part of, part of the, the PC piece in terms of how far we go is, is a little bit of, of making sure that that is made permanent so that we know if we have that flexibility, is it October one or June? That's a, that's a good term to use on it too. So bonding capacity was not an option five years ago. Nor would, nor would we recommend doing that if we hadn't had the opportunity over the last twenty years to completely have a renaissance in our schools and to see our schools or, or, or we can now focus on the full job and the full experience for, for, for our kids and our community and knowing that we have state and our building to help out.
You just have to obligate the funds by changing period. That becomes part of the question.
You know, I don't know if this is the right time to say this, I was, I was curious if you could explain CEQ funding? Everybody. Not in depth, but.
Jeff made me promise at the time.
Well, I think just that I think everybody should know how the funding works and the funding mechanism. We've talked about this before. And we're kind of collateral damage for the way that program is set up in the state because of the way our, I guess, the price of average house in the community is, as, as well as we do. So we require a lot of funding from the community and that's why we have to get so far in these projects because we're not guaranteed this money. So we have to go this route in order to hopefully get the funding from the state. Is that, am I speaking incorrectly?
I'm going to get, I'll get the, I think I, I'll get to the, the shortest version of what I think you're asking.
Yeah, I just want people to understand how it works and how it's a little bit more difficult for us. And I think the reason I'm saying this is because there's a lot of programs you see out there that seem like the advantages are really starting to come into life here with acid drop on the field and everything like that. But then you see a lot of these other communities that you wouldn't think were starting to lap us, you know, in the last twenty years, right? So we've done a lot of programs in the last ten or fifteen that are really trying to catch up and people don't realize how far behind we actually are. It's because we have to self-fund a lot of programs, correct? Because that, that CEQ formula doesn't exactly help us as much as it does some other communities.
The best way I can talk about the CEQ formula is that they, they start when you, when you look at what's projected. It says that per, there's forty-two hundred dollars per kid is given by, by the state. Now that is average daily attendance. So, so it's not how many kids enroll in your schools, but it's what percentage of them come to school is, is where that forty-two hundred dollars is. But that's sort of a misnomer because of that forty-two hundred dollars, thirty cents of every one hundred dollars of assessed value in your, in your district in your schools. So, so of, of the forty-two hundred dollars that comes, we really only truly get about three thousand per kid because it's a local contribution just to the CEQ portion has to come from our, from our taxation and tax base. So when.
If you don't get that thirty percent, you don't get the CEQ funding, correct?
Yeah, you, you.
You have to get, to get the, the amount, your, your local municipality has to give you.
A minimum thirty, yes. So, so when property taxes or when property values every four years go up by twenty percent, then the local contribution goes up, which means the state portion goes down. So for example, and, and remember we are capped at, at four percent local increase that would come in. So that's where we set the tax rate after that four percent change. So, so what happened was after the property values went up that last time, we actually realized about a million dollars less from the state due to property increases.
Few people need to understand that though, like, you know, just because we're, you know, a nice city and people do well here, it actually can cause a little bit of misnomer how much funding we actually get for our programs.
Every time the property values go up locally, the state funding goes down. It's the best way to say it.
Our property values are just a little higher.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a long-term problem and if you, you know, this is going back years and years and years. I mean, there was, you know, a long time ago, people sued the state. Likely that is the, you know, at some point that's likely to happen again. I mean, we, we are losing a percentage of state funding every year. But at the same time, we've always had some great state partnerships. You know, we talked about with Representative Kleins that we have now. And they have really helped us short paths when we needed them. So, you know, they helped in lawyer and they helped with Johnson and, so they, they've helped. It's still a painful conversation where we do the bud, you know, budgeting and, and Brian said, oh, by the way, with the recent increase that we're kind of sold on the property values, we're going to lose a lot. So, so it's painful.
The basic CEQ formula is like thirty years old, am I right?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight. So has that, I, I think I remember back in the early two thousands or so, there was an effort to change it. Is there any talk about that formula changing?
There's always conversation, but the, the levels of complexity of it and the, when I say it's a long conversation, there are also add-ons for no SES populations, for trans, for English as a second language, for homeless populations, for students with disabilities. So they, all of that is tied to, to those components. To change it, really you'd have to redo it. And so.
So you're basically saying it works so well for the majority of the communities, that it would be tough to get the support you would need to make that change, is that?
It's intended to be an equalizer.
I, 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 I think, you know, there's always collateral damage, whereas overall, it's not, it's not a horrible damage. It just doesn't work well for us.
So some conversations have been go to average daily membership instead of average daily attendance. But at the end of the day, all the CEQ formula really does is take whatever the allocation from the legislative body is and then allocate it out to all the schools. So, so it's, it's, it's a distribution formula is the best way to say it. It's a bit more than nothing.
Yeah, and if you change, if we got a change to benefits, it would be great. But then based on that, then somebody else is going to hurt.
Yeah, there's office. Thank you.
So a, a change would no doubt hurt.
A change could help us. The problem is, is that it probably, you know, we're in the minority in that. And so if there was a change, it likely would hurt the minority. So.
That doesn't.
Yeah, that's why we made the change because overall community, you know, overall representative is probably.
And whether or not we're not, in this county, we're not necessarily the biggest CEQ. Any other questions on tower or did I leave anything out that you guys would suggest or recommend that we?
The only other thing I touched on, you said, well, I was, uh, there is a little bit of, I don't want to say an arm strength, but all, a lot of high schools putting in new athletic complexes like this too. So I mean, to try to not just keep up with the amount of sports we have, but I mean, to give students the opportunities.
To reduce all the program.
I think it'd be important, yeah. I mean, you hear, uh, boot camp and duck camp and all sorts of places that are footing, you know, facilities like this. So we do think.
Well, we're not just a track city because our academics, that's not. We're also tracks because our sports and opportunities we offer to kids. You know, children to grow and become, develop their abilities, you know what I mean? So they're going to put their parents, if they have the option, they're going to put their kids in the best spot they can know possible for them to succeed.
And it's just the right thing to do. It's just the right thing to do. We're very conscious of, we have four years of high school for kids to have a great experience. So it's not one of those things where we say, we'll get to that ten years from now. Well, we've got lots of classes that went through and it's just, it's just the right thing to do for our kids. Those of us who have kids, you know, grown, have grown up in different programs. Those of us who have kids, you know, grown, have grown up in different programs, how many times have you sat in a field, a baseball field, you've looked around and, you know, you've got a soccer complex over there and a baseball, because they are ground rich, they are land rich, and we are not. And instead of us saying, I'm really sorry, you live in a small town, we we, you know, we think and and talk and like, what can we do? Where, we've been talking about when this field goes for a while, where's our soccer team going to practice? And so Brian and I were thinking of like every corners of little land in the city. And there aren't many of them, there aren't. So it's just, it's the right thing to do for these kids. Yeah.
I do like, I do like the idea that Matt was talking about. We figure it out and we do it, two phases, makes sense, you do it, we'll do it. Get a whole lot done in phase one to keep the field being used as long as possible. And then figure out the timing based on where phase one takes you. And then when it's all done, then we get out there and we move up the property lines. We'll do anything at a time, wait till it's all done and we figure out, okay, the school should own this, the city should own this. Let's do it and make it.
And so you're you're expecting to hear back within the next 30 days of phase two? And then it will come back and tell us if phase one?
We've got, we have some decisions.
So is it being open for Campbell County youth and citizens? Is it just going to be open?
They rent it currently.
They rent, what about for like citizens, if I want to go run? And I remember for years, back when I ran, I could go up and you'd walk through the little turnstile thing and you'd walk out and you could, and that's, it's going to be open like that.
The the track will always. I'm not going to leave the field alone, but the track will always be open.
I think that's fantastic.
In fact, we we ain't have restrooms now, though.
And it is huge. I mean, if you're out there on a Wednesday afternoon, there are people from the community walking that track, so cool.
That's what that might have to be behind the little shed.
Yeah, yeah. That's what helps the elderly, the ladies, that's okay.
And Matt and I, we've talked about.
Probably.
And Matt and I, we've talked about, as we finalize some of these things, we should even have them in in agreements. Because even though we are very beautiful, someday they may be, the people beyond beyond us.
I think that'd be, especially for the Campbell County youth, I think that'd be a fantastic thing to have. Just knowing that they have the future of the use of the field.
Well, they're very pretty.
I'll holler in a few of the city projects, I'm not sure the board knows, but it doesn't hurt. Along with Tower Park, we have, next month, we're going to be starting to break ground here for the Tower Park Playground that council just, our council approved last month. It's, we've put a lot of time into the planning here, talked to a lot of all the mom groups and poor commoners and just trying to make it as inclusive for for kids with different abilities. It's a it's a really awesome park that we finally have started. It'll break ground at least by the 20th of November and then it'll be completed by the 24th of May. So it'll be available for next for next summer. But that was a a long process for council, for staff, just to kind of get it going. So it's, we're really excited about that project starting here real soon. Like I said, you may have seen some of the highlights of of it. We've identified different areas for different age groups. We try to be as inclusive as we can, make sure there's, you know, ADA accessibility, not only accessibility for ADA, but, you know, for grandparents with disabilities and be able to get to those locations. A couple of things we built, it's like, well, Howard County is going to get to that quickly because we know how kids split, especially if you have a couple, it's it's hard. So I think I think they've done a really good job. In addition to this project, the next slide, Brian, is there's going to be a new entrance to the park. We've got a plaza here that's going to house the statue of Thomas that was, that's taken to the foundry right now. So it'll it'll have a really nice look, just even the entrance, not just the actual park. So it's it's exciting. That whole area is just, it's a really exciting project that that's going to happen here in the next, you know, less than a year. So it's kind of, it's kind of an exciting park for us.
Can you organize?
There's a corner of the towers on the left.
Is the tower there?
Yeah, so this is, this is right here. The tower is over here, the tower is on this side. So there'll be a, there'll be a sidewalk that takes you down to the park here. And then also this, the right of sidewalk, that'll be taken.
Is that the river right here?
What's that?
Is that the river?
Yes, yeah, this is Douglas here. Yeah, that's going to be.
Matt, has there been any consideration about putting a sidewalk on the north side of Douglas?
No. I mean, we've got it on the south side right now. I mean, not something we could do in the future, but for this project, for what we've been out, that's that's where we have it at the moment. That is definitely something we can look at in the future. So that's that's our our big project that'll, like I said, will be done here by May and the company is gearing up right now to start that. Route eight's been something we've been working on for years, you know, and my clients is here and Senator Shelley Funky Bremeyer, I mean, those are two things, as soon as they got in office, I started talking to them about. And I mean, within how many months, Mike, you guys had that sealed up for us and and they're off to the races now. So it's really exciting that, again, in the spring, that that road will open again. So it's been, it's been a lot of, a lot of work for the city to try to to get that. And then we've gotten such great help from our representatives and senators. So it's it's a great community thing. And even with that project, you know, I've been working with Brian about just trying to get support, you know, to figure out the properties down there that's actually in the school district and things like that. So just about any project major between both of our groups, I mean, we're communicating to get data. So it's been, it's been really great.
There was some talk about, what, where are you going to do that road? Is it going to become a full open road again?
It's going to be, it's going to be an open road just like it had been. Yes. A few other things, you know, we got, I've got a meeting tomorrow morning with transportation about River Road because that's the next thing I've been waiting for, Route eight to be moving before I start building up the next one. But, you know, we all know River Road with the, everything shifting, the water comes over there and, you know, a few times a year, probably more than a few, the water covers that road just from the, it's just not. And talking to them at the O K, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, they actually do have a plan to to soil nail that back. So that's what we're going to discuss tomorrow. So that's just, you know, that's something that's, once we get that done, I think we'll have a much better area. Obviously, there's a field down there that that we both use. You guys park the buses down there, so it's an important break for Thomas. You know, the the state brings up that traffic isn't as, this traffic volume isn't as much, but it's still important to our town and that's, and that's why we fight for it. You know, we've got pickleball, dedicated pickleball courts here that that we're finishing up. Talking about doing that in Highland Park. We, I just met with parents from the tennis program last week, I don't know if they haven't told you this yet, reached out to us and not happy with the condition of the tennis courts that, you know, we we own, that you guys use. And, you know, I've I've worked with them, just trying to get some quotes right now on improving it and seeing what that will look like, just to do some quick repairs just for next year and even a complete overhaul. So just getting, and it's just, that's the cool thing about Fort Thomas that I've never dealt with in my other, you know, city administrator job is, you know, the, we all know that the citizens here are very passionate. And that's, you know, that can be good and and challenging at times. But but, you know, it was, it was a, it was a tennis mom that reached out and, you know, met with her the next day. We we went through some of her ideas. It made sense. It's something that is easily overlooked because we have so much going on around here. And she brought up really valid points. And not only did she bring up valid points, but I mean, she, I think she was ready, she had solutions. She's like, I know, I know a fence guy, I know a court guy. And literally those two, I met with in three days and I'm going, you know, by the end of this week, I should have a full call. So redoing the court. Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's, that's awesome for me because, like I said, we're we're tight on staff here and it's, time is, time is challenging to try to get as much as we do. And I think we do a great job of what we all accomplish with how much we have to do. But but just by that meeting with her, I mean, she probably saved a couple of months of work trying to find that different people. And the two groups that she pointed out that I met with were top-notch, I mean, they were really great. So it's just, that's the exciting stuff for me and my job is just to have, have citizens not only come to you with problems, but have solutions ready and, you know, she's, she's probably done this before. But it's, but it was great, you know, and I'm going to have a great number to show and, you know, I'll show Brian the numbers and we'll see if there's some collaboration and talk to council and see what we can do. But I think it's it's justified and and it's great that they're bringing it to our attention. Again, it was, it was a complete blending of school, school and city for that, just like, just like the athletic complexes. So it's just, those are kind of exciting things. Not that I'd like to see that we need help in the tennis sport, but it's exciting that we can work together like that.
I think it's, I think it's important for now that, since you've been here, I've heard you talk to a lot of citizens in town and you're like, you know, I appreciate you coming to new problems, we're coming to solutions. Because becoming a solution for how a lot of these issues may address. It's quite clear, you're in the right direction, you're not just kind of, just telling me what's wrong all the time, you know what I mean? And just put a plan together and I think that does happen, so everybody will, it shows that you will tend to listen, not that you're not.
It is. Yeah, and even when you don't have solutions, I still like it, but but it's been, you know, I've got a lot of, that's how I've gotten a lot of other projects done is, you know, a couple of people have come to complain about something and, oh, by the way, I mean, there's just one down with the rez on Longley and they wanted me to do something and it ended up we couldn't do it. And, but he was real respectful, but he's like, well, all right, you didn't, you didn't do what I wanted, but hey, I've got time on my hands. If you ever need help on something, you know, I'm going to, I think he was a retired school teacher, let me know, I'll be happy to help. So I mean, those are, those are just some of the really unique things about Fort Thomas that we have here. And it's just, it's really because of the schools and the city blends so often, so.
I know you guys talk about pickleball a lot and I know it's not the, your final idea, but really the the striking you did down on the tennis courts on the lower level was really nice. Somebody uses that. So much better idea is chopping that before Matt. Up and taking.
Right.
I think, you know, the timing between the work that the city's doing at the Tower Park and then the work that you guys are going to be embarking on, have already embarked on, but it's ironic. It's it's really awesome because, you know, it doesn't go without great concern that we're talking about spending a considerable, a considerable amount of money up there. But in my mind, I've said this before, if you're going to spend that kind of money, what better way to do it than than an opportunity that presents the greatest improvement for the greatest number of people in town? Tower Park is the focal park in our community and, I mean, especially from the athletic complex, the playground that we're working on, the new entrance, if you can raise some improvements to tennis courts and any other community driven ideas that we have up there. I mean, it wasn't that long ago when all those homes that I was in, your circle, were, were, I swears in total this repair and we've got that taken care of and we've got, you know, the nice new facility by the softball field. That park is just going to be, in my mind, the gem of our town and to show off and it's going to be spectacular.
And it's, and it's partnerships. And right now, we're, we're starting, the Vietnam Veterans Association came to us about the memorial there. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a fifty thousand dollar project that the city's not funding. They came to us with with just wanting some help, but, you know, we're, we're going to help with the concrete work, which is probably around ten thousand dollars of of labor and and material, but they're funding the rest, you know? So it's just, that, that's what makes this park so great is we all help a little bit. It's not just the city funding, it's not just the school. It's really exciting. And, yeah, I mean, this next 12 months or whenever, you know, especially when your grand complex is done, I mean, I think that park is just going to be perfect, you know? It's just really, it's a really awesome space, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to mention at this time too, we're looking into helping upgrade the mess hall, take that to the next level as well.
Yeah, and the staff's looking at the mess hall and the armory, just ways to update that, have it more accessible for the citizens to rent out space and things like that. It's just, it's an exciting, it's an exciting time for for both of our groups, especially with Tower Park here. There's just a lot going on. That's all the updates that's been in.
So my, so my last set of updates were really around just trends of the moment living in the district. I know that's going to be some, some topics and so I'll tell you what I've, what I've shown to you, it's two slides. I started in in two thousand and three, simply because, took that to twenty year snapshot, right? So I started in two thousand and three and then I had, I went to ten and fifteen and then every year from fifteen to today. And that's very purposeful. There are two columns in white, one is total enrollment, the other are the number of tuition students that we had in the district. What I'll say to you on the tuition student side is it's a little misleading because if you went, you go back in the late eighties and the, and the early nineties, it was more like the rest of the middle pattern. It was, it was around anywhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty. And then we saw a dip, we saw a dip in the late nineties and the early two thousands, mostly because that was also around the time that we put the trailers in the front yard. I mean, it was, it was, it was about that same time, so. But what, when you look at it from a twenty year snapshot, you see that we've, we've had about a twenty-five percent increase in in total enrollment. That's significant in a, in a time period where where you're, you're really starting to see a dip in in zero to four age children across the country, but but in our region and in our state. In our state, there's, there's typically about a four percent drop in enrollment over the last five years in student enrollment. And it's not all because of moving to new places, there are just less kids is is some of that explanation. And so, so this chart will tell you a couple of things. One is in that span of time, we're able to increase in a way where we were, we were able to bring new opportunities and expanded programs to our community because of of the kind of numbers that we had. And we renovated facilities to accommodate that. Since about 2015, what you see is a healthy, steady, on pace growth, right? So so you're seeing, we saw a big jump. Some of that coincides with with a real focus on on facility improvement, on engaging tuition students. And then we also saw some demand when, when, when we would, when we would reduce tuition students, we'd see more demand of people moving in. So like in two thousand and eight, where the rest of of the country really experienced a housing bubble and a decrease in property values, we did not. We saw a steady, a steady enrollment and a steady hold on property values, even a little bit of a decrease. Our focus is being at the destination district. How do we make sure that people who graduate from here want to move back here, raise their families, bring the spouses they met outside of the district back, back with them in one way, shape or form? And then where, how the best teachers want to come work here. They see this as the place that maybe if they're not ready when they come right out of school to work in, they're going to come and get a little bit of experience and they're, and they're ready for for that venture. So I feel like we've hit that, that stride. We do have new families moving in, but we're also able to manage it so that we maximize the opportunity for our kids, but we don't outgrow our spaces and we manage that with really, we accept tuition. And that's, that's where you see some of those factors. So so that's the total enrollment for for the district as a whole. This is by school and I think it's many years, but you can see, starting again in twenty, two thousand and three, and then in five and ten year increments. A couple of things that you'll, that you'll notice here, big changes in high school enrollment over that twenty year span of time. But also some pretty significant changes that had really all of our schools in Woodville really kind of stands out in some, in some ways. As we renovated that space in 2014, as we, a high performing, a high performing school as well. So so just some change in patterns when you look at where we are. In terms of capacity, Woodville and Johnson are pretty darn close. They're, 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 they're right there. Lawyer is, is, is healthy, but it does have some, some space and room that it could, it could grow at a, at a, at a rate. So that's where we focused our, our tuition fees. We have tuition applications coming in for students in kindergarten. We look first to see, can we make sure that the other two schools are where they need to be from the early enrollment? And then we only bring tuition students in if it, if it gives all of our kids maximum opportunities. I would get these, are any questions you guys had? What about the expectancy at the middle school? You notice that the, I would say, again, the high school could probably be twelve hundred and not be overcapacity. I would say the ideal is around eleven hundred, so it's getting, it's getting very close. The middle school has been, has been bigger even in in the ten to fifteen year snapshot there, so. So we were as high as, as, as seven seventy. That was, that was pretty tight. So I think where we are is the right deal. We wouldn't want to add a whole lot of grade levels at the elementary schools or a lot of sections at grade levels at the elementary schools because of the question you asked, like where are we at?
So capacity would be like two fifty to three hundred before things get really tight? Split out all over the place or something like that?
Just depends, probably when they come in, the right school they go to.
Like right now, there's a big class of sophomores. Our sophomore class is about two hundred and ninety students, which will be the biggest class we've ever had through high school. The class had them is at two thirty. So the full school even did itself out.
How does it, if you relate that to like not accepting tuition students to not affect capacity, how do you, how do you manage that at a grade level? If somebody's a junior and, you know, is the capacity in school or do you look at that capacity at a grade level?
A little bit of both. It's more grade level at elementary schools because you dedicate a home room that stays with that teacher and the new in pockets. Whereas at a high school, you really can adjust based on student requests and how, just how many sections a teacher might have. So whereas if you have twenty-eight in third grade classroom, everybody's losing their mind, right? But if it's a government class of twenty-eight, the next period might be twenty-four. So it just, the short answer to your question is it's more grade level at elementary schools and it's more school level at the high school. A social studies teacher at a high school can teach ninth, tenth and eleventh grade students. So they just slid up into their depth.
How much revenue do we bring in from tuition students? I was told before, it's probably about a million dollars. How important is that to our funding for our school mechanism? Compared to what a normal student would bring in? So we have two hundred, how many, just two hundred and forty-three tuition students? Is that a million dollars? Is that about right? So how much would two hundred and forty-three students, how much, is that actually generate revenue?
She's doing it.
Well, I just know that the tuition students are very poor in the school system, right?
About fifteen teachers.
Yeah, fifteen teachers. So the tuition students are great to have, right? You know, plus we have people like Bill Grindig, which is the Campbell County School District, so we cut the students from there, you know what I mean? So it's, they're comparative. They come here sometimes, families from about town, joining with these core of the Alexander Worf that want the kids to go there too, so.
But we're only gonna add tuition students when it doesn't result in a need to act stat. So if you have sixteen at a grade level, you can add more tuition students and maintain the integrity of that class size and that school size. But you add a lot of new students.
Sure. When we look at the funding front of the state, we look at it and say, okay, this is great for me. So what do we, so we'll fund more teachers than what they tell us that we should. And class size is lower than what they tell us we should because we think that's best for the kids. And so that those tuition students pay for all that, pays for that.
I think, go ahead.
In the budget, I was just reading this today. So the, it looks like it's almost half tuition from two years ago. So you're expecting less tuition students?
Well, that was when, that was when that rule changed.
So there are a couple of places where students, tuition students bring in revenues. So three years ago, there were two rates for a student who'd come as a tuition student. And they would say receives ADA and the other was not. So there were agreements within amongst districts prior to three years ago where the state dollars could, would be released. And so state dollars would follow the kid. If they didn't, which most of Campbell County didn't, then the students had to bring, had to pay a higher amount of tuition, but they aren't counted towards your attendance. They changed the law three or two years ago to Council five sixty-three. So any Kentucky student, the state dollars follow them. So that revenue you see is just actual dollars paid by families in addition to the state allocation.
So we reduced tuition at the time, because we were getting state dollars, but we usually never, it was very rarely.
What is tuition offer in county and out of county, right? It's a two different numbers.
Now it's Kentucky or not Kentucky. So we, and we have a handful of a lot of students, a lot of residents that come to your schools. Just a small number, but it's around thirty-six hundred dollars for out of pocket tuition. Now, there's a part of attracting great teachers. There's a good discount if you work in our school district.
You know, I'm so glad you brought this up, because you know, Matt's been great on top of it a lot. We're obviously going through some zoning changes. We're looking at some stuff and, you know, I love hearing that you guys are working together and communication is good, whether or not it's heated or not, or however you wanna, I think you wanna put it. But, you know, we need to ensure our school doesn't suffer any unneeded fallout from our zoning, right? So we have thirty houses roughly coming on Newman, right? They're thirty acre lots, right? So there's also fourteen acres still available, I think, somewhere in the subdivision, which is actually different than the stuff on Newman. So you can put almost two hundred and fifty houses down there, which is probably gonna come and do at some point, which is gonna be quite the amount of students. So I just, I really think we need to stay on top of this communications there to make sure that we don't make any unneeded changes or things that go to our future or affect our school system because it is, our city's livelihood is based on our school system. I'm glad that there's been so much work that Jeff and everybody on the park system bring on up the life, because we can always hang around the school system with this.
That's a, that's a good point. And what would be the difference between that and like the Villarreal people? So the people in Villarreal can't go to, they don't go to Fort Thomas, correct? They go to Campbell County?
Yeah, actually the street next to the one, Park Place and Boardwalk.
Yeah.
They're split, like, the split, yeah. So if you looked at a Google map, I mean, you come to the Campbell County and the Fort Thomas School District, I mean, it's just a big whatever in that whole area. So Villarreal's in the Campbell County. Let's see, I think Park Place is in Campbell County. And Boardwalk, which you have to drive down to our place to get to Boardwalk, is in Fort Thomas.
Would there ever be any kind of way to get them into Fort Thomas?
No. Pretty big money for Campbell County, you know what I mean?
Yeah, Campbell County, they had to breathe. And so they.
So this is an old line that.
Yeah.
I think, so I just go back to the townhomes behind the Kunder Park. They actually annexed Fort Thomas, didn't they? And it wasn't originally, was that Southgate or was that Campbell County? Which is unusual. I mean, townhomes, a lot of people aren't gonna do that, kids.
Yeah, there are, Manhattan Harbor, if you look at Manhattan Harbor.
Has anybody been down there recently, like? It's something to see.
So if you just look at the marina, the one development, if you're facing the river and look at the marina, some of that development is actually Campbell County School District. All of the apartments to the right of it are all Campbell County School District. And then the other half, that's Dayton School District. So it's, there's some really odd lines drawn in terms of where the.
And that's. Black line elementary, the house across the street from the line is not good sign.
And not due to the other town.
Green, since they're never going to.
Coke, that's all over. You can have Coke, the new development.
That's Campbell County, yeah. Totally our house.
If they got a school board out in Campbell County that was a little bit more forward thinking about how insane it is to do that and to be willing to give up the money and say, let's just, let's fix these things, let's do it right. We've tried several times to get people to gather. And it's all about them. It's all the money, and they don't wanna give up the money. But then they gotta take buses and send buses to different places. And, you know, somebody sits down and really figures this out, it's like, come on, if there's so many pockets like this, let's clean it up, you know?
But it would take volunteers like us in Campbell County who runs your school board and say, enough is enough. Let's clean it up and fix it, so.
Is that true when you build a school, you have to do a census? You can't build it with projections for size? People keep telling me that lately, like, when you build a school, you can make so many exceptions and do what you can and work around the system. But you really build, dictates what your actual current student population is. Is that true?
So some of those, some of the same relaxations that occurred that allowed us to use bonding capacity towards this field, some of that was entered into that as well. But prior to two years, when we built all of our schools, they followed really strict rules about how many kids we can build it for. Even our auditorium, if we built, that was one of the only benefits of doing renovation is that when you built that school, if we built it new, it would be one third the size of what it is today.
So that's why they get the bonds, the finances, is to help cities make up for the fact that they can't, they couldn't build past their current.
I think it's just how we did, we can do facilities in there. But now, there's more, there's a lot more flexibility for the board to build.
More.
The way they can control that. Now, the danger is, is that it used to be that he had to stamp all of his projections. So we gotta hope that there aren't many day boards all over the state that are really.
When, what's the date for all our schools? I was curious on this, from middle school to Johnson, when did we renovate everything?
Two thousand and one at the middle school.
So between two thousand and one and now, every single school is gonna be done here.
Twenty year period.
And that was basically the year after I had left.
Yeah, that was actually planned.
But you were talking about developments, I mean, like the new development, we can handle those sort of things. But you did build something the size of two fifty, or something the size of what Southgate building over there.
I mean, thirty houses though, a third of an acre can mean four to five students per house. You never know. I mean, there's gonna be large houses, you know, that the subdivision I was talking about is six acre. It's, you know, there's only kind of headed to one before, maybe some revisit. But that's a, it just, it just makes me nervous, you know what I mean? We hang our hat on our school system so much that it's just, you know, when I, my memories from here, the reason I came back is because the ABL was a school with, you know, friends and relations of like developing. Then I brought it down from work, because you, you guys knew how many of people I did and that was all kicking the schools and, and the programs, you know what I mean, so.
I mean, that land of the city's up on Southgate that we're developing, that's in Fort Thomas, that would cause some major pain points. It's good that we have communication, so.
And that's what it's all about, right? To make sure we make the right decisions for our region outside of the other developments. There's a lot, want and need.
Keep it strong.
That would live our trust, by the way.
I'm not gonna spend the time talking about this other than, you know, one of the next things that we'll do next, probably next spring, start our local planning commission process where we look at facility needs and revise our core year plan. We had some discussions, maybe even start that early because we made some progress, but we've got some other things to do. Outside of that, attracting attending staff, really expanding opportunities for kids. That's our, that's our focus right now, making sure we're strong.
Awesome. Great job, guys.
Could I ask about the SROs?
Yes.
What's the plan? What's the plan there? What I've heard is every school has to have their own. I know that you guys have worked closely with each other and with, I don't know if you work at state, but not have one each location. Could you be more specific?
Yeah, I mean, the rules, the law changes, they have recommendation. And then you can't meet that, or don't need to meet that, you just have to justify why, right? And that's what we've done, is justify why. And in Fort Thomas, we don't need one at every elementary school yet. So that's why we, and even the justification for one is enough. But, you know, we've been talking ever since up in here of wanting to add a second one. It just, it helps Zach get that pressure off him because there's a lot of work from the middle school and high school. So now that having our second SRO has really helped, helped that, you know, give them a little change of scenery, allow them to get to the elementary schools more just to be seen, that that we need. You know, there's not a lot of police work needed there, but it's, it's just a good opportunity for them to start getting their relationships more in the elementary schools when they do get to middle school and high school, that they're ready. But it's something that, I mean, Brian and I have talked, you know, a lot until now. And even now, we're gonna discuss it a couple of times a year just to see where we're at. You know, I talk to Zach and now Chris just to say, you know, whenever I see them, how's it going? You know, are there needs? And that's how I kinda started the thing with Zach. And he said, yeah, you know, we can really use, I could use another person to be helpful. It's not necessary, it's not critical for, you know, losing ground or anything, but it would just be really helpful. And we laid that out and we talked to Brian and made it work. But we'll be having those ongoing conversations. I mean, you know, I, just like I talk to TD all the time. I just, I relayed to him what they're saying. If there's a, if there's any time in the future where we need to talk about a third one, then, you know, we'll have a discussion.
So the two, you're comfortable with two and the state is allowing just two?
We've never been deficient on our safety.
And you also have to have people to fill those positions. It's a very well intentioned law.
Yeah.
It's, you know, running the same issue funded education. It's hard to staff at the level that these things are.
Yeah, but in addition to Brian and I, our opinion that two is enough and the police department's the same. You know, I mean, I go to KC and I ask our chief of police, and you know, what are your thoughts? So everybody's comfortable with two. We're, actually, I shouldn't say we're comfortable, we're very happy that we have two now.
Well, it's very fortunate we've been in schools in the last twenty years too.
Because it's.
That's what I'm saying, schools, and you have it, people answer schools, and the lawyers are waiting and stuff like that, so we've come at the right time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're very blessed in the city. Because the citizens care so much about education, schools are so great, we have fewer problems. The post I saw yesterday, my daughter sent to me on Instagram from the city of Fort Thomas, talking about the ding dong, whatever they're called. You know, and she was so excited about that post because it says, look, guys, you know, parents, talk to your kids, let's stop doing this. But, you know, that's the kind of problems we have in Fort Thomas. It's not murder.
You could put it on Instagram and scare yourself. You should put it on Instagram and scare the ass.
I think that's not a distraction.
Quite a business.
We have to, I mean, we've been compliant, we're in compliance with all of the state taking laws and schools have never had more attention on safety ever in the history of our country.
You've helped a great work, guys.
One thing I think sort of Dan touched on while we're all sitting here is the lack of field usage we have around town. You know, I mean, growing up, we'd practice, there'd be multiple teams practicing football behind Moyer. That field doesn't exist anymore. There'd be soccer practices all over little fields that really, schools got done or different city projects, that those have gone away. So I think something moving forward that, you know, maybe it's just on somebody's mind that would be helpful for us as we try to keep going is finding those little places for, you know, use soccer and baseball and football and all that, so.
And we are working on that, yeah. Kind of, along with the Tower Park project, trying to use some, actually some of the resources there. But, you know, as a city, we do have some options to add green, what I'm calling add green space for field and things like that. So that's something that's definitely in the works. And we're very conscious about that, that we need to be making sure that there's space in the city for everything from soccer to football. Because, you know, one field, as you know, can be used for multiple things. So, yeah, we definitely have a plan on that. I have a plan I'm pretty excited about. That's part of the conversation tomorrow, actually, with the state, so.
We spent a lot of time on the needs of the city and if we could actually implement, because if we have to eat up the green space, we can't do it because we're so limited. So we spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah.
There has to be a balance between everybody, just youth, all ages, you know what I mean? For what their useful parts, their spaces used for. You know, I think Matt's done a great job, I think. You know, one thing is this communication thing. I think, I didn't realize how many hats you guys wore over time, you know, YouTube.
I had all two.
Yeah, they have to, or we get burned. But, you know, it was just the agreement that Matt and you guys worked on as far as Tower Park goes, so there's no more questions in the future. I understand handshakes were, they were valid at a certain point, but now there's not gonna be any argument. We know exactly when to use it, who can use it, public use it or private or the schools. But it's also another thing that, you know, Matt's come in and gotten organized and got control of Highland Park back, for instance, you know what I mean? And some of our programs have just been built out of control. We've let private citizens run things they probably shouldn't, you know what I mean? Because they care and not out of anything, you know, like the baseball field. And some of our, I think some of our fields aren't in the best of shape either. So I don't think they're utilized as much as they could be. So just cleaning those up and make it like one on River Road, probably get saturated because of the water that comes down, the holes, potholes and rocks. So I think we have a lot, I mean, ten soccer fields, I think we'll use it this time. I mean, baseball diamonds we have in this town and where our hills, that's something to be committed about. We have a lot, so we have a lot of space that's still that people use, you know what I mean? We just gotta make sure it's not just there, just use it as one spot, you know, not using the other stuff too.
Are there any other topics that you're all minds or topics of future collaboration?
Well, and Clint, like you were talking about with fields, if you guys ever have ideas for the city, don't think you're like, you know, you got to stay in a school. If you have things like that, that, hey, why don't I do? If you have things like that, that, hey, why don't we do this? By all means, we either contact me during, contact me here, Brian, because there's, that's why, that's why I like so many citizens to come and tell me problems because we just can't see it all. I mean, I know we got public works out, we got PD out, we got fire out all the time, but sometimes we overlook, because you see the same thing. So anytime you have any things like, hey, why don't we do this? And it might be just a quick, oh, this is why, oh, that makes sense. But, you know, if, if we get even one out of ten times, if you do that, it's a good idea, we can actually implement, so. Please do, because, I mean, you guys are citizens too, so, so please share them.
Likewise, you know, I feel like you brought up using the student population. I mean, I think it'd be great to expand on that. Somebody brought up to me, you know, they walk the trails, there's trash, there's this, there's that. Students need volunteer hours and things, and I think if there's, you know, opportunities that the city has, it's a great thing to build some character for students and say, hey, I'm, they're making time at the city to clean this stuff up. It's my city. And so if there's anything further than that, maybe school people can help you with that.
Because I think that's been something newer, right, for the volunteer hours. Because I've been hearing that a lot, a lot the last few weeks.
So, yes, you can start a list of things, you can allow. Six hours for sixth graders, so.
Yeah, sixth grade is not a big deal, but eighth grade's pretty soon.
Do you think we could put something together of like a menu for what students can choose from? Like cleaning up the trails or stuff that the city could use?
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem is when we do that, it's got to be manned by us, you know what I mean? We have to have staff involved, so that, but that's something I'm looking at now.
Just could be like an idea.
Right, just, that's why we're kind of pushing more for the schools, for the students to kind of lead it, just because.
Or have a group.
Sky from coming out on Saturday. And it gives them a little bit of leadership experience and managing stuff. But, yeah, that's something that, I've been, I've been casually thinking of that honestly more personally because I've, I have numbers to check off, too, right? But I probably can think more larger and have some trail days and things like that, just picking up.
What if we have adopt the Highland, you may have groups at the middle school that adopt the trail. You know, and dance, it's like their cool show.
Adopt the lawnmower.
Well, yeah, definitely, even I'm, you know, wanting to, to adopt a flower bed because we have so much in, in the town that it's struggling to keep up all of it. So I've even had the idea of like to do on it, put a little sign that says, you know, the Kramer family adopts this little, this little triangle. And, I mean, it would make a big impact if we did, but it sounds silly to me.
So I know, I, I think we hit on some topics and I think, I feel like we had some good conversations. At the same time, I don't want to cut it short.
Does anybody feel when this meeting will be, do you think every other year or every year? I like every year, but.
You know, honestly, every other year probably be good for this, now that I'm thinking about it. But I think every year, I mean, I know I'm kind of joking about the pumpkin thing, but just doing something. I need, I need people, I need people carving pumpkins, so.
I like every other year.
But I wouldn't mind just getting together to try to do something every year, even if it's not much meaning.
More casual and something a little more serious.
I think every year. I, I like it every year, so.
Well, let's see how much we can put together and actually intelligently talk about it every twelve months, but we'll see how it goes.
See how the things we talked about the last.
Yeah, so I think, I think we need a target to do something every year, whether it's a, a full presentation.
Yeah, it's good to say that every year, do something small.
I think it's good for us to recognize each other well.
I mean, you guys are.
And get the knowings over.
Right.
So that's the whole point, right?
Yeah.
And thank you. I mean, you guys are true servants in every, every, every way you can say it, in terms of serving our community, making it better and making us a person. So thank you for your time.
And humble.
I tell you, I think, you know, we were talking about the golf simulator earlier. It was Lauren Plaza. She, he played so much, I played with him, I played with him.
With Josh.
One year, and he would give me instructions like on the pin. We're insane. And then all winter, one year, then we played the next year. It's like, what the heck happened? Like just, I mean, he was unbelievable. And I told her about it, he goes, she was like, thank goodness, I was going to kill him, all those hours he spent down there.
He was really good.
And let me tell you. It was a case study, right, I don't know. So I would just go research to figure out those things.